Now, webinar series. My name is Michael Collier. I'm the Business Development Manager for the Downtown Cleveland Alliance. I'll be moderating a Q and A session after today's discussion. So throughout the webinar, you're welcome to submit questions using the Q and A button along the Zoom menu bar. Or in the comment section via Facebook Live, and that we will have some questions lined up and ready to start the Q and A. And I'll now turn it over to our Vice President of Business Development, Michael Deemer. Michael?
Thank you, Michael, and welcome to our audience and thanks to our guests for joining us today. At the outset, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Downtown Cleveland Alliance. For those of you who may not be familiar, we are the only nonprofit entity that's dedicated solely to making downtown Cleveland the region's most compelling place to live, work, play, and visit. We are almost by definition, a place-based development organization that represents property owners, residents, large, mid-sized, and small businesses, as well as civic partners in downtown Cleveland. Over the last 15 years, we've worked holistically to concentrate our efforts on downtown to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment that attracts additional investment into our city. A place where residents and office workers can walk to meet their daily needs, where local retailers and restaurateurs animate the streets and cater to residents, office workers, and visitors alike. We work very hard to make sure that downtown Cleveland is a place for everyone. Clevelanders from all walks of life can gather to celebrate milestones, create memories, and come together as one community in response to grave injustice. It's also where we come together to debate, discuss, and problem solve. Do that work through the support of our members, our corporate members, our philanthropic partners, and individual supporters, all who make our work possible. And that support is needed now more than ever to support small businesses, aid the beautification efforts of downtown Cleveland, expand our seeds workforce readiness program, and sustain our downtown Cleveland homeless fund. You can find out how to support those efforts by visiting us at downtowncleveland.com. As Michael mentioned at the outset, we launched the Downtown Now webinar series a few weeks ago now. And I'd like to thank Cleveland Magazine and Community Leader, our media sponsors, for this project. Since 2018, the Downtown Now insert in Cleveland Magazine has served to highlight the progress of downtown Cleveland. We've used the webinar series over the last several weeks to chronicle a rapidly changing environment, utilizing the webinar platform to share updates related to the COVID-19 pandemic, deliver resources and updates, bolster economic resilience, and share insights on the latest information and initiatives from voices across our downtown community. We have that and so much more to talk about today. And I'm very grateful and I feel very privileged to have the panel with us today that we do. Introduce Councilwoman Phyllis Cleveland, who represents the Fifth Ward in Cleveland, including the eastern part of downtown, the central neighborhood, Kinsman neighborhood, and Midtown. She serves as Majority Leader of Cleveland City Council and chairs City Council's Transportation Committee. Welcome, Councilwoman Cleveland. So joined by Councilman Bashir Jones, who represents Ward Seven. He has the distinction of being the city's first Muslim elected to. And his ward includes much of the historic Huff neighborhood, as well as St. Clair Superior, Midtown, and Asia Town. And then finally, we're joined by Councilman Kerry McCormick, who represents Ward Three, including much of downtown Tremont, Ohio City, and the Stockyards. Welcome, Councilman Jones and Councilman McCormick. Councilwoman, I'd like to begin with, maybe ask you to set the stage for us and look back a week or two ago. We were talking a little bit before we went on the air about the ties to 1968 and some of the unfinished business from that year that we're still reckoning with as a society and as a city. Can you tell us a little bit about, you know, in the aftermath of George Floyd's death, how you felt, how you felt about, how you felt about it personally in the context of the city of Cleveland's experiences and how your constituents reacted?
Well, first of all, thank you, Michael, for putting this together. Good afternoon to my colleagues, Councilman Jones and Councilman McCormick. You know, this has been a, up until a few weeks ago, 2020 was a very normal year, right? You know, for the last two and a half months, we've been living under the threat of the COVID, the COVID-19 virus. And then all of a sudden, we're, when we're thinking, well, what, how can things get worse? And they do. And of course, you know, Mr. Floyd's murder was the flashpoint, but there are other things leading up to this. And some of it is, of course, generations long. As we were talking about earlier, this reminds me of the year 1968. And of course, I was a very small child then, not adult, not a teenager, but a child. But in that year, we saw a lot of turbulence and a lot of change in this country. Lyndon Johnson was the president. We were in the middle of the Vietnam War. We were losing the Vietnam War. There was a lot of racial unrest, a lot of unrest in the cities with college students because of the war. And then we experienced the assassination of, on April 4th, 1968, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And then two months later, June 6th, 1968, Robert F. Kennedy, you know, the leading presidential candidate, Democratic nominee for presidency, is assassinated. And I think it was just more than this country could bear. And for the rest of the year, you know, the turbulence, the protesting, the rioting in a lot of our major cities, and a lot of our college campuses just ratcheted up to the point where, you know, Lyndon Johnson was literally driven off out of the White House. He stepped down, stopped and decided he would not run for president again. And that led to more turmoil. But in many ways, the atmosphere and the mood in this country is the same. And, you know, I'll tell you, just dealing with this year, it wasn't just Mr. Floyd, although that was the last one. And it was, it was finally, you know, the flashpoint of everything. But we also had, you know, the murder of Ahmet Arberry. And it wasn't by the police, but it was by someone with connection to the police. And certainly, the way the police and the justice system handled that, you know, was atrocious. We found out about this in May, and we found out that it happened in February and nothing had happened. And then the tragic case of Breonna Taylor in Louisville, the young black woman who was an EMT for the city of Bouleville, who was murdered by law enforcement officials bursting into her home, which happened to be the wrong home, and shooting her and her dead. And then finally, we get to experience watching George Floyd die. You know, we saw, we watched him die. We watched the breath leave his body for nearly nine minutes. And that was just too much for America to bear, especially Black America. But also, it opened eyes for a lot of people who either didn't really appreciate the relationship between the police department and the Black community, or didn't want to see it, or didn't want to acknowledge it. You know, it was laid bare for everyone to see. And that's where we are now.
Well, I mean, thank you for painting that backdrop. And I think it puts everything into into context. And Councilman Jones, I'd like to, you know, bring it to the very recent past and ask you to take us back to Saturday, you know, which was planned as a day of peaceful protest in response to, you know, everything that Councilwoman Cleveland just talked about. And, you know, share with us a little bit about how you felt as Saturday began, and then as the events of the day unfolded into the evening.
Thank you guys so much, man, for inviting me. And it's always a pleasure to be with my colleagues. Let's be clear. You know, I just got off the phone with the family of Desmond Franklin, who was shot and killed here in Cleveland by an off-duty police officer. And they still hadn't even gotten the word from anyone. I mean, can you imagine your son or your daughter or a family member shot and killed, and you're stopped from even seeing them, and you still have no idea what's going on? Like, this is the unhealed trauma. Listen, when you look at organizations, Black Lives Matter, and, you know, any NAACP, any organization, whoever they are, we may not always agree on the vehicle, but we do agree on the destination. And the destination is, is that, let's call it what it is. The police must be reined in. The community is tired of the injustice in a system that vilifies the victim and almost uplifts the culprit. And so this is a problem. So, you know, this rally that we saw, it was overall peaceful. I mean, I didn't, I wasn't there. I decided not to be there. I decided to really spend time with my children and really discuss this, what's going on, you know? Our children have, are being affected by this as well. But it was an overall peaceful rally. And then you had outside agitators that came in and began to cause problems. But I was on the Geraldo Show the other day, and he said, well, you know, aren't you upset, I mean, aren't you upset about the buildings or glass being broken? And I said, well, I just wonder if we would be having this conversation if it wasn't. Listen, I'm not for the destruction of businesses. I think that looting does not honor the dead. You know, looting does not honor the dead. But we all have to do a better job. And if we want to increase population in this city, we have to stop being a city that people don't feel welcome. It has to be more equitable. You have a city that's majority African-American, and the only institution that represents that demographic is the county jail. Come on, man. I mean, I mean, this is a serious thing, and it can't just be words. So I'm excited that we passed a resolution declaring racism a public health issue. But it's been a public health issue for almost 400 years. So I can understand how people are feeling kind of skeptical and pessimistic. Before I became a councilman, I was skeptical and pessimistic of elected officials. But that is what made me run for office. So today, we're doing the Big March Solidarity March. My colleagues and I, and we're marching down Huff. And really, it's just a message to, a message to the city, let us talk about what we do with our anger. Because if you just suppress this anger, you begin to become hopeless that tomorrow won't be any better than today. So I understand people's pain. I understand their anger, and I won't tell them how to express their anger. Better yet, I want to discuss how we use our anger to bring change.
Well, we're looking, we appreciated the work that we do with all three of you. The work, not just in downtown, but in the surrounding neighborhoods that all three of you represent. And there's a lot of work to do. And maybe that's a good place to pivot to you, Councilman McCormick. You know, picking up Saturday evening, I know you represent the wards that have been, you know, most impacted by the curfew and the residents most impacted by not just what happened Saturday evening, but the curfew and the subsequent days. And I wondered if you could share with us a little bit about what you've been working on and what you've experienced in representing your ward over the last few days.
Thanks, Michael. And for, to my two downtown colleagues, good to see you both. As always, we'll see you in a little bit. You know, I have talked to more folks, whether it be people in the media, residents, business owners over the past few days. You know, my phone, it sits on the charger because it rings so much. But, you know, what I've got to is really, we need to start with a conversation of not the specifics of the demonstration or the specifics of what happened later in the evening, but why the energy is there and why people are coming out. Far too often with these types of things, whether it's in Cleveland or other cities, you know, folks being the local media or otherwise, or on Twitter, they focus on this happened or that happened. And the bottom line is you know, so many people in the United States of America, you know, people of all different backgrounds, but acutely in the Black community are exhausted. Exhausted is the word that I've heard over and over and over again from folks that I've spoken to about watching these murders happen over and over again and it not changing. And so, you know, I think for us to have this conversation, we need to focus on the fact that, you know, there is a feeling of exhaustion and anger in our community. And that this is not just an issue for one group or another. I mean, when we look at our community, we've got to understand that if one community or systemic racism, one systemic racism is greatly impacting our city, that brings us all down economically, socially, from a humane and moral perspective. And if we don't make meaningful progress on attacking systemic racism, we're not going to see holistic progress in our city ever. So this is acutely affecting certain members of our community, but it brings us all down. And I think a lot of the energy that we saw on Saturday, you know, which by the way, it was a diverse group of folks that came out expressing their anger and frustration is because, you know, of the continuation of systemic racism and the feeling that nothing's changing. And so, I mean, that to me is really what I think the focus of our conversation in general should be, is why hasn't the ball moved enough on these issues? Why, you know, are we not really focusing on these issues on more of a day-to-day basis, not just when a major incident happens? You know, one of the things, I was proud to be one of the major, or one of the original co-sponsors of the Declaration of Racism as a Public Health Crisis. And the reason I think, and I've gotten a lot of feedback on social media over the past couple of days, what does this do? This is pointless. It's a waste of time. You should be worrying about this or that. I've seen it all on my social media feed. And what I'd like to tell folks is, the reason that I think this is important is because it puts the work that we do on a daily basis in the lens of systemic racism. It says all the work we do, whether it be economic development or health-based or otherwise, needs to be understood through the lens of systemic racism. If we care to truly make progress on health issues, on economic issues, and otherwise, we can't make progress unless we understand the incredible impacts of systemic racism. So this declaration, the framing of these conversations through the lens of systemic racism is important to understand the real roots of issues and to actually make meaningful progress. So, you know, I wanted to just put that out there because I feel that a lot of questions about what this means. So the last few days, again, I have nothing to complain about. I mean, yes, it's been very busy. I've been working, you know, to keep residents informed. You know, I will say that the communications and informations that have been coming out to residents have been subpar. And that's been frustrating to me because residents, you know, have not known what to expect. What does the curfew mean? You know, how does this apply to me? I need my meds. I need to get to work. We just saw a story, an unfortunate story today through WCPN of a downtown resident who was coming home after he had gotten something to eat. And he was stopped. And then after that, he was arrested for number one, going to get food. And then number two, you know, going to his job. So, you know, there's a lot of concerns like that, that, you know, folks have reached out to me on. And, you know, one of the frustrations has been, from my perspective, is the lack of communication to residents. And also, you know, making sure that everybody's on the same page about what these rules are. Because again, you know, we've got 20,000 people that live downtown, and they need to, you know, take care of basic necessities too.
Well, since we do, we do have an audience now, why don't we take a minute and just remind folks what the current, some of the current issues are that are in place. The current curfew goes back into effect at eight, will be in effect until tomorrow morning, correct?
Yeah, correct, till 6:00 AM.
And then my understanding is it goes back into effect tomorrow evening?
No, right now, unless I haven't seen anything recently. The last thing I saw is that it ended at 6:00 AM tomorrow, unless something was released that I haven't seen.
Okay, well, we'll try, we'll go with that. We'll see if we get any, I might ask a question while we're on the air here to see if there's anything.
Don't you have like ton producers back there that can fact check this for you?
A whole team of fact checkers. And I think it's also worth noting, we've shared some communication today through the Alliance and through downtown Cleveland residents that, you know, there are places like Constantino's City Foods and Simply Foods that are all grocers downtown that are open. The CVS in East Ninth Street is open, including the pharmacy. So to your point about some of those daily needs that can be met at least between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM, we want to make sure that we're communicating about that to all of our residents. So thank you for reminding about that. I do want to circle back. You know, you began to talk a little bit of Councilman McCormick about the public health ordinance and some of the things that that could do. And Councilwoman Cleveland, I'd kind of like to go back to you and get your thoughts on, you know, the significance of council taking that action and, you know, what you think some of the potential is that could come from that, what you think the significance is.
Well, Michael, I think that was a really innovative step on our part as a city council. And again, I'd like to give, you know, credit to my colleagues here, both of whom are the original, among the original co-sponsors, along with Councilman Blake Griffin. And they put in a lot of work. And this wasn't something that they just rushed to the table in light of what happened last weekend. This resolution was introduced in March and preceded by, you know, weeks, if not months of work. If I'm not mistaken, and I know Councilman Jones and Councilman Griffin both serve on the Real Committee of the National League of Cities Race and Equity Advocacy Committee as a part of the National League of Cities. So a lot of work and a lot of thought went into this. This wasn't just a knee-jerk. Let's do something. Let's wave a flag, you know, but this is real, serious work. And I hope, and we've seen since we introduced, since we passed ours on Wednesday, that the county is looking at doing the same thing. The state of Ohio, the city of Akron, the city of Youngstown, we're all getting calls from other cities who are looking to us to say, we want to do this too. And we know there are other cities who are already on this road. Milwaukee, Pittsburgh, and of course, the city of Seattle, who first enacted racism as a public health crisis, maybe 15 years ago. And so I think what we're seeing is a confluence of events. Our resolution, the things that are now happening, the protest movement, and we're just seeing that maybe this is, this is the time for the things that we've always needed to do. And you know, we're getting a lot of support, you know, even from the corporate community, Greater Cleveland Partnership, University Hospitals, Cleveland Clinic, and a number of our local partners are saying, we support you. And so, you know, we're going to leverage that support, you know, that pledged support, that pledged written public support. We will leverage that to do what we can to help us do the work that we need to do to make sure that Cleveland is an equitable and inclusive city that everybody, regardless of where they live, where they come from, where they were born. You know, for example, my ward, my residents live, I have residents in public housing. I also have residents who live in the nine. And so they should each have equal opportunity, equal access to education and all the things that we as Americans, we as Americans expect to have.
Well, Councilman Jones, I'd like to get your thoughts on, you know, kind of forward-looking. You said in your opening remarks, you know, you're interested in, you know, how we all, you know, work together among your colleagues in council and organizations in the community. I mean, as you look forward, what are, you know, some of the steps that you'd like to see taken with your colleagues on council in order to, you know, move things forward a little bit?
Well, not just my colleagues on council, but every last one of us must take an active role in making our city better. And what happens on the west side affects the east side. What happens downtown affects, you know, on the other side of town. We have to get out of this east versus west, black versus white. No. This is everybody versus racist. Okay, that's the team, you know? As long as you're not on a racist team, you are a part of the everybody team. Because racism affects all of us. It affects every last one of us negatively. So every organization from the hospitals, they must make a commitment to increase the money they spend with minority businesses. They must increase cultural competency within doctors who, you know, Black women are really suffering as they go to the hospital and being sent away because they're not, they're not, they're not, they don't know how to deal with them or handle them, right? So hospitals have to take a part. Banks have to diversify their boards. They have to look at, you know, me and Councilman McCormick have been talking about this since I've been on council in looking at, if banks are not going to invest in the community in which they are in, then we as a city must disinvest from them, right? So this is not just on the backs of, you know, people who are who are getting in front of the police. Like, the only people, you know, you have people saying, well, you know, we need to teach the community how to deal with the police. No, we need to teach the police how to deal with the community, right? We need to see organizations do a better job of being equitable. And that's the city included. You know, we live in a city where a majority African-American, but the majority of police officers are white men. How can you say that you truly want to see a change in the community and better community relations between police and community when the majority of the people that they're seeing does not look like them? Now, listen, it's not just about color. We understand that there are great people who are all different cultures and ethnicities. But there is a system that's in place that seems to be, seems to be rejecting Black and Brown candidates. You have the firemen, 75% white men. There seems to be a system. You can't tell me that people are not applying for this. Not one woman, not one woman who's in the fire department, I mean, who's a firewoman, right? So this is an all-hands-on-deck approach. And I believe that as we become a city that is more equitable, you'll see a population increase, you know? Look at what's happening downtown. Downtown, under the great leadership of Councilman McCormick and yourself and others, is becoming a place that is open to all people. So that's why it's thriving. It's not thriving because it's just a, no, it's thriving because everyone feels and should feel welcome. And I believe that as a city, we can do the same thing. So we have to use this bully pulpit. As elected officials, we have to use the bully pulpit and say, hey, city, let's make sure that we, that our workforce, right, not just the, not just the street sweepers, but upper management, right, must also represent the demographics of this city. And once people feel welcomed, then you're fine. But this takes courage, man. You know, ever since I've been in office, you know, I'm sure I've said some things that people are like, what is he doing? But it was about pushing the needle and saying, you know, subconscious racism is a real thing. And there's people with good intentions who still become tools of structural racism unintentionally.
Well, I appreciate everything you've said. I especially appreciate your words about downtown because, you know, creating, I meant what I said at the outset, I mean, creating that environment, that place where everybody feels welcome is important to our success, not just in downtown, but really the entire city. And, you know, I'm proud of the work my colleagues and I have done at the Alliance, but very thankful for the support that we've gotten from all of you as well, because it really is a team effort to build that kind of environment. And we can certainly continue to come back to all of the issues that we've been talking about. I do want to, I do want to spend a little bit of time talking about I do wanna, I do wanna spend a little bit of time talking about the, the challenges that COVID nineteen has created for us as a city, us as a downtown. And one of the things that it's done is, uh, it's created from challenge, some challenges, uh, for downtown to be that, uh, central gathering place, uh, where we all come together, uh, simply because it's harder to come together right now. And, uh, Councilman McCormick, uh, you know, I, I know another thing that you've been working on with your colleagues, uh, in the council, uh, took some action on this week is, you know, trying to, uh, make it a little bit easier for, uh, businesses to spread out a little bit. Uh, and, and welcome, uh, Clevelanders into, uh, their shops and, and, uh, restaurants, uh, i- i- in downtown. And I wonder if you could talk a little bit about, uh, that effort and, and what your hopes are for, uh, its, its implementation?
Yeah, for sure. So, um, the idea is, you know, obviously with COVID nineteen, um, happening, you know, the health of folks in our community is, is first and foremost, but you know, shortly after that, we've seen the impact it's had on small businesses in our community. And we know that, uh, from east to west to central to downtown, our, our small businesses are the heart of our, our community. And they, uh, many of them locally owned and they, you know, um, hired local folks as well. So, um, we don't, in order to accommodate folks and to support them as much as possible, um, after, not after COVID, but after the restaurants opened back up and some of the small businesses opened back up, um, we drafted, uh, working with the mayor's administration legislation to allow for the use of the public right of way, uh, for expansions for the small businesses. So whether, you know, a restaurant, being able to safely seat more folks, whether it's in that parking lane or if there's a place where the street even can be closed down or the sidewalk. We want to make sure that we're putting tools in place that support our small businesses. A part of that too is, you know, the city, um, has worked not only with city resources, but also with other organizations to provide things like, um, uh, low to zero interest loans and grants, uh, uh, to supplement what the, you know, the federal government's doing and otherwise to support our local small businesses. It's not been an easy ride for them. Um, but again, you know, uh, the city and, you know, economic development partners in the community are really hustling to, uh, do what we can to support our small businesses. Cause we know that they're so special in, in downtown and throughout the city. So, um, that's what that's about and thankful that it, you know, unanimously passed. Um, uh, yes, was I yesterday now? Yeah, yesterday. So we look forward to, uh, seeing that, um, for our businesses downtown.
Well, we're grateful for, for y- your leadership on that and, and the, uh, uh, you know, the work, the collaboration with all your colleagues. And we'll, we'll look for, forward to implementing that with, with you and in, in the administration as well. What, I, I know we've got a lot of questions starting to come in from, uh, uh, from the audience, uh, both via Zoom and, and Facebook. So what, why don't we pause here for a moment, uh, and, uh, ask my colleague, Michael Collier to, uh, share some of the questions that are coming in from the audience with us. Michael, I think you're muted.
Thank you. Um, so we have one we've heard quite a bit is how do we show support for the businesses impacted by Saturday's events without detracting from the spirit of the movement?
And as I said about that, um, Michael, we just jumping in?
Go for it.
You know, I, I believe that, uh, as I said in the, in the comments section, that supporting businesses is, should be a part of the movement. We, we want to have a strong Cleveland. And, um, you have a lot of businesses downtown and, and s- s- some, some, and majority rather, w- w- are great businesses, great people who have, who have chosen to be in Cleveland. You know, some of them could have chosen to go elsewhere. So I believe that that's a part of the movement. A strong Cleveland is a part of movement. An equitable Cleveland is a part of the movement. So we want our businesses to be taken care of. I would say at this time, they need your support even more. So, so yeah, just, you know, uh, get two burgers instead of one, you know? Uh, don't eat it though, you know, you have to give it, give it away. But yeah, they, they need our support and we have to be there for them.
Good question. Thank you.
Yeah, and just, um, just quickly too, and I agree with Councilman Jones, um, that it's an and not an or. And, you know, far too often people are out there to divide us. Um, and that I think is contrary to the mission of the movement. Um, and I'll just add a little bit, you know, that, um, I was out on Sunday morning as well, talking to residents and business owners. And there was a, I just want to thank all the downtown residents and business owners who came out to volunteer to help clean up. Um, and as a part of that, talked to quite a few of the business owners who, um, and, and, and subsequent have talked to them. And really a lot of the business owners, and again, I just want to make sure people know this, are, are frustrated with the inequities in our community. I mean, so they share the concern of, uh, what has been going on, uh, for many, many, many years and, uh, in, in our community, which is, you know, what is, um, creating the, you know, anger and exhaustion. So, um, it was good to, you know, good to hear from everyone in the community that there's a shared concern there. Um, you know, in addition to the folks that have helped volunteer clean up, there are different organizations like the Hebrew Free Loan Association that is, has immediate zero percent interest, um, loans going to, uh, affected small businesses to help them, you know, pay for any damages or otherwise. Uh, I know that the city of Cleveland is also, Economic Development Department and others are also working with the small businesses as well. So a lot of folks, uh, pitching in. But again, I want to be clear that to me, um, I just want to echo what Councilman Jones said. I mean, it's, it's supporting, uh, the small businesses and our folks are a part of the movement.
No, I, I appreciate that. And, and I should, uh, you know, take the opportunity here to, to mention to, to folks who are listening, you know, one of the things that, uh, our team is doing at, uh, Downtown Cleveland Alliance is reaching out to businesses that, that were impacted and, you know, making sure that, you know, we understand, uh, any, uh, uh, unmet economic issues that, that they're facing, uh, in trying to, uh, provide the technical assistance they need. Because some of these are very small businesses, uh, that were impacted, uh, and, you know, we, we want to get, get them back up and running, uh, as quickly as we can. And, uh, you know, I, I think, uh, again, Councilman McCormick, you, you've been, you know, working around the clock and, and the, the administration has, has been, uh, very, uh, responsive to us as, as we've been trying to, um, you know, get as much, um, uh, information as possible, uh, out, uh, in, in a, in a difficult circumstance. And we'll, we'll continue to do that over the next few days. And, uh, you know, grateful for the resources the city's provided, uh, through, through the COVID nineteen pandemic. And, um, you know, look forward to the, the, the partnership and addressing the, the, any needs that may, may arise out of the last few days. Michael, uh, are there more questions from the audience?
Uh, yes. So while our last question dealt with, uh, what, uh, residents and, and visitors and just, um, community members can do to, uh, help downtown businesses. Kristen on Facebook would like to know, uh, what is the city doing to help, uh, the downtown area businesses, uh, who may have sustained damage?
Yep, ju- just like I just said. So the, the city's economic development department, um, uh, the first of all, the, the Public Works Department was out, um, the night of cleaning and helping, supporting the small businesses. Um, the city of Cleveland also was on hand immediately with, uh, uh, helping people secure the businesses and boarding the businesses. And then right now, um, the Economic Development Department is working with their nonprofit and private partners from the economic side to support them. But as Councilman Jones said, um, this isn't all of us thing. So, um, go out and, you know, uh, support your favorite business. Buy three burgers so that you can eat one and give two away. But no, really, this is a time when people should be in their head, uh, you know, whether it's Heinz or other, uh, you know, Geiger's or otherwise, make sure you're, you're going above and beyond if you can, um, to support these local small businesses.
Appreciate that.
And then, uh, shifting gears a little bit, uh, moving on to the next question, um, the resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis, uh, was a first step. Are there steps that will follow? And if so, what are those steps?
Well, let me, let me say to, to everyone out there that just to go, just take a, let me moonwalk real fa- fat back and then come forward. Community, you gotta keep your foot in our behinds. You have to. And like, like this guy, man, Kerry McCormick, man, you guys are lucky to have this guy, man. I mean, this guy works non-stop, right? Like there's some people who don't need that extra kick to move, you know? And Kerry is one of them. He, he's one of them, man, you know? Um, but there's others who need that kick. And there's so many different layers to this, so many different layers, man, to making this thing work. And, 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 and Councilwoman Cleveland, you know, who, who has the wisdom, who's been a part of this, knows it better than me. You know, I could, I could see her look sometime and she's just like, slow down, you know, because I, I, cause it's just so much that you want to do. But it's so many layers, so many doors. So the community has to continue to talk, okay? All right. Okay. We, we broke some windows. Now how do we, how do we rebuild? How do we build? And that's the, that's the conversation that we have to have. So let me go forward. It's gonna take the community to continue to say, what, what's next? What are we gonna do? You know, I was speaking with Council President Kelly and we're in the process of forming an equity commission. An equity commission that won't be just council members, but also the community. And really look at every department in the city and really begin to decipher, have we been equitable or not, or have we been a part of the problem? I was talking to, uh, County Councilwoman Sunny Simon. The county also has an equity commission. But sometimes the community doesn't know about it. So we have to get them involved and letting them know. So once again, it's gonna take Downtown Cleveland Alliance to make sure that, you know, equity, equity is, is taking place within businesses in the community and, and making sure that no businesses downtown are engaging in any racist practices, whether it's keeping certain people out based upon what they look like, based upon what they're wearing, so forth and so on. So I just want everyone to know that yes, this is a document, but it's a big first step. It's a big first step. I mean, like you just said, uh, you would think that it would have been happened, you're right? But it hasn't. We in twenty twenty. So now it has happened. Okay? So now how do we take this document and say, okay, Cleveland Clinic, we appreciate your work. We thank you for what you've done, but in your backyard is the highest black infant mortality rate, some higher than some third world countries. We, we appreciate your work, Key Bank, but how much money have you invested in the community? I'm not talking about, uh, secure credit cards. I'm talking about serious development, serious opportunities. Okay, you know, this group or that group, what have you done tangible? What have you done tangible that we can point to, to see that you've been a part of the, 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 uh, the, the, uh, the solution and not a part of the problem? So, so I guess just my, 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 my answer is just that every last one of us has to ask the questions. And we have to stop being reactive and we have to be proactive.
I, I, I appreciate every, everything there. And, and it leads me to, to think of, there are a bunch of follow-up questions I want to ask. But I, I want to, uh, bring, uh, Councilwoman Cleveland, uh, back in, in, into the conversation, uh, uh, on, uh, I, I guess th- there are so many aspects, uh, to the topic of equity as, as it relates to, to downtown. And, you know, one of the things that we talk about a lot here, uh, at, uh, at, at DCA is, um, job accessibility. And y- y- you know, we, we've, we've long believed that, uh, having, uh, the highest concentration of jobs, uh, not just in the region, but in the state here in downtown, uh, is a, is a great, um, opportunity to i- improve equitable access to jobs. Because we've, we've got a lot of jobs concentrated in one place. We've got the public transportation system that, uh, i- intersects and, and concentrates, uh, i- i- in the downtown area. Um, you know, this is, you know, a, a place where you don't, uh, need a car to access work. Uh, we have a lot of options to, to get people, uh, to their jobs. And Councilwoman Cleveland, you know, kind of with your, your, your work with the Transportation Committee at City Council, you know, I'd like to ask you, you know, how you look at this relationship between, um, uh, transportation options, uh, in the city and, uh, job access. And, and you know, whether there are things that y- y- you think organizations like ours can, uh, work on with council and the administration to, uh, to improve, uh, job access to downtown for city of Cleveland residents?
Well, Michael, first of all, thank you. Uh, I thought we were gonna have to rescue Councilman McCormick. He, he had turned upside down there. But, uh, public transportation, i- i- it's a very, uh, critical issue to the, um, critical to the issue of equity. Transportation or transit is not only, you know, how you get from here to there, but it, it connects you to opportunities. It, it connects you to education, to, to other parts of the community, to family. And so it, it really is a central lifeline for people in this community. And, uh, you know, I, I think our transportation system is, um, it's, it's pretty fair, uh, you know, for the downtown area. But, you know, while we have a, a high concentration of jobs in the downtown area, let's look at this. Uh, a lot of those jobs are highly skilled, require high levels of education. And the skill sets don't match up with the skill set of people who live near downtown, like in a central neighborhood and Huff neighborhood, uh, North Broadway community, which I also represent. And so, you know, we, we've got a, uh, you know, we've got a divide there, uh, the transportation divide. So how, how do we, uh, you know, that, how do we bridge that gap? Number one, um, creating a, a transit system that can take people from our communities and from our neighborhoods out to centers for jo- where they can get jobs that they are currently qualified for. But also how do we prepare people in the community for the jobs that are here downtown and the jobs that are coming in the future? You know, what we gotta really look at is, uh, you know, a lot of the jobs, uh, uh, today will not be there tomorrow. And in fact, we knew with auto, with automation and artificial intelligence, that a lot of jobs will become obsolete in, in the next five to ten years. But what we found with COVID is that a lot of jobs became obsolete immediately. Immediately. And those jobs were people primarily, uh, uh, low income workers, primarily, you know, black and brown people, people of color, uh, people who don't have high skills, they don't have high education and who need their jobs the most and who, who can't work from home because the jobs are required hands-on, they require your physical presence. Or that if you can work from home, they don't have internet access, high-speed internet, and they don't have the computer equipment to work at home. So again, you know, another example of, um, where we've got to be more intentional about creating equity, the digital divide, uh, public transit, the skills gap, um, you know, all of those things. So while it, it's great that we do have a high concentration of jobs downtown and certainly, uh, the more jobs we can bring downtown and, and, and other parts of the city, you know, we're helping build the city. We're bringing revenue into the city that in, in turn enables us to do other things and provide services for people in the community. But, um, that, that gap with public transportation and the skills gap with the jobs that are, that are here right now, you know, is very real.
Well, there, we're, we're, uh, coming up, uh, close on, on, on our hour here. And I, I, I want to give each of you, uh, y- you know, i- in opportunity, uh, uh, to, to share some, some, some closing thoughts. And, and I think in, in doing so, I'd, I'd like to throw out the, uh, the, the question, um, to, uh, uh, we'll start with you, Councilman McCormick. You know, what, what can, uh, Downtown Cleveland Alliance do in, in, in working, uh, with you uh, to, uh, most effectively, uh, you know, support you in, in your goals of, uh, a- achieving a more, um, more, more equitable and sustainable development uh, in, uh, in your ward and across the city?
Great. Um, and thank you again for hosting this conversation. I really appreciate it. Um, you know, I gotta say, uh, I'm gonna, you know, work off of what Councilwoman Cleveland just said. I think that one of the most important things in our city is the, um, the, uh, opportunity or one of the most important issues in our community is the opportunity gap. So really helping with, you know, what we know is also going to be good for business, um, is, you know, figuring out how we can better connect our residents throughout the city of Cleveland with opportunity and what those skills and will be in, in bringing in our, our educational institutions, um, so that they're excessively providing the tools to attain those skills. I think that's going to be really important. Uh, for far too often, elected officials across the country have told people that your specific job X, Y, or Z is coming back. Uh, we saw our president do it over and over in the election. Instead of being honest with people and saying, no, that technology or that approach may have changed, but we want to get you up to speed to be able to go with the jobs that are there today. So it starts with being honest with folks, also, you know, um, connecting them to, uh, those resources. One last thing I just want to say too, and I, I don't want the folks to leave with the idea that there hasn't been a lot of work done on this issue already. Um, as we frame, um, uh, racism as a public health crisis, you know, I know that some of these issues don't make the front page of the paper because they're not sexy. But, um, council, you know, with Councilman Cleveland as the majority leader and Councilman Jones, um, council, you know, with Councilwoman Cleveland as the majority leader and Councilman Jones, um, there have been tremendous movements on, um, fighting childhood lead paint poisoning, uh, infant mortality. Um, we've also funded nonprofit organizations for mortgage lending in redlined areas. And I say current redline, that's not a past thing. Um, you know, we've passed the decriminalization of marijuana, um, you know, uh, made sure that folks that are facing evictions have attorneys. Um, all of these can fit into the global perspective of fighting back against, uh, systemic racism. So there has been work done that by no means says that we're done by any stretch of the imagination. But all of that existing work too, I think can fold into the lens of fighting systemic racism. And thank you so much for everyone that took the time to watch today.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, and Councilman Jones.
Thank you guys so much for allowing me to be here. Uh, you, you would have been great with just, uh, those two amazing council people right there, man. So thank you for allowing me to be here. I just want to be clear with everyone that everyone is not a rubber stamp for the administration. If you were to come to our meetings, if you were to come to the committee, if you were just to pay attention to what's happening in council and certain things that Councilman McCormick just said, this is us fighting. This is us fighting. And it's easy to, to paint a broad stroke, but I'm telling you, you gotta come into some of these meetings and see and hear what we're talking about. I mean, every meeting, you know, I'm, I'm asking the question. You know, give me the numbers. Why, why isn't it any diversity? Why isn't it any diversity? And it takes courage to do these type of things. And I'm just happy that my colleagues and I, uh, we, we, we were courageous before, before this. So I just want to say a couple of things. Number one, as I was speaking to certain people today, that they must charge, charge and bring forth the murder of Desmond Franklin. We must do that. Cleveland has had too many situations with police and community from Timothy Russell, Melissa Williams, to Tamir Rice, to Tanisha Anderson, Desmond Franklin, on and on and on and on. And there's a couple of issues. Our police union is a big headache here in the city of Cleveland. And the mayor wants to get rid of some of these people. I truly believe that. But you, when you have a police union, um, who's very strong, it makes it hard to get rid of these, these rogue officers who end up coming right back to the force. Right? So there has to be some serious conversations within a safety committee, which I'm on, and we really have to address these issues for everybody that's tuned in. You are, you are, uh, our allies. You are allies. I'm speaking specifically to, uh, I hate to say black people and white people. I hate that really, but for the sake of conversation. You are our allies. You can go into rooms we can't go into. Unfortunately, you can say things that we can't say. You, you are taken seriously in certain ways that we are not taken seriously, unfortunately. So you have to use that power for righteousness. You can't be silent. Dr. King said, there comes a time when silence is betrayal. And if you're silent during this time, you are betraying humanity. You must speak up. You must speak out. Marching and protesting is good, but you must speak at your, your, your businesses. You must speak in the organization that you are part of, and you must ask the tough questions. Why aren't there any women in upper management? Why aren't there any black and brown people in upper management? Why this? Why that? Start asking the questions. And then you will be, then you will see what the answers are. I, I'm so ecstatic about the future of Cleveland. I believe that Cleveland is going in the right direction. I really believe that. But last, my last words, you know, today we're doing a big march of solidarity. As I said, we're going to be marching from Thurgood Marshall at 6:00 PM. And we're going to be ending at Fannie Lewis Park. Uh, my colleagues are going to be there. Congresswoman Marsha Fudge, a lot of, a lot of organizations will be there. So I would love for you to come and be a part of it. It's a beautiful quote that says, we can't continue to handle 21st century problems in an 18th century way. Cleveland must catch up with the times if we're going to go back to international glory. Michael, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Jones and, uh, Councilwoman Cleveland. I'm going to turn to you to take us home. Uh, you, you kicked us off. Um, yeah, just like to, to ask you to, you know, provide any, uh, closing thoughts on, uh, the next steps, uh, for the, the, the city from y- your, your leadership, uh, position at council, uh, as, as we, uh, you know, we're, we're still in the mid, midst of a, a pandemic. We still have some, uh, a, a lot of, uh, uh, tough work to do and tough conversations to have as, as we've talked about over the last hour. But to give, give you the opportunity to hear to, uh, point us in the, the direction of the, the, the next steps you think we need to go in, 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 in the city and in downtown.
Okay. Again, thank you, Michael. Uh, and Michael Collier, he's gone. Uh, thank you for putting this together. Uh, I enjoy it and I'd love to do it again sometime. Oh, there he is. Uh, uh, just a couple of things. Um, um, one point let me make, um, you know, we have a council of 17 people. And 17 people bring 17 life experiences, uh, challenges and triumphs, uh, family, upbringing, uh, all of those things. We all bring those things to, to council every day. I would say that there are no rubber stamps in council. I know people like to say that and like to use that term, but, uh, if you're being true to what you believe and you do what you think is best, and you know, you happen to be in alignment with the administration or with anyone else, it's not being a rubber stamp. It would, you know, you, why would you do something different if you, if you didn't believe something different? Uh, number one, um, number two, COVID is, COVID is, is, is real. It's still here. It's still a threat to us. So I encourage everybody in the community, let's continue to be safe, you know, practicing, social distancing, um, you know, washing hands and do all of the things that the health experts recommend. Um, I will say that although our numbers in Cleveland look very good, we aren't testing enough people. So we really don't know. And so while we're dealing with what, we have to deal with multiple things in council, you know, we don't just deal with one thing. We, we deal with policy issues. We deal with constituent issues. Uh, that takes up a large part of all of our days. Uh, we deal with, uh, development. We deal with crime. We, we deal with any number of things every, every single day as, as council members here in the city of Cleveland. That's what we do. But, uh, i- in terms of where we go from here, you know, one of the questions, uh, I, I've had people ask me, uh, in, in my ward, uh, you know, people who are white and who are, who are struggling themselves, you know, they've had hard lives. You know, not every white person is affluent and, and, and doing well and, and making lots of money. And so the real hard questions are there, you know, well, what about me? What about us? And I would just say that when we deal with, uh, racism as a, an equity issue, as a public health issue, we're going to help the entire community. When we're healing the, the most sick and the most vulnerable, and when I say sick, I don't mean necessarily physical or, or illness, but in terms of how they're treated by the system, when we are able to treat those individuals and create opportunities and access, that's going to help everyone who's struggling, everyone who's poor, everyone who's missing out on opportunity. It's just that the reality is, and the data is, and the history is that systems in this country, and that's all the systems, uh, the educational system, the financial system, healthcare system, criminal justice, any system that you can think of, uh, were created to favor one race of people over the other. And that was created to, created by white people to favor white people. And, and the, um, the data supports that and we all know that. And so if we can reform these systems, you know, it's not an attack, this is, it's not an attack on individuals, you know, point fingers saying you're prejudiced. You did something, but it's these systems that are in place to favor you or someone like you over someone like me. That's what we got to fix. And so, and that's going to benefit all of us.
I think those are, those are wise words that, to end on, uh, Councilwoman Cleveland. I, I'd like to thank you, uh, Councilman Jones, Councilman McCormick. Uh, thank you each for taking the time today, uh, for your partnership and collaboration, uh, with, uh, the alliance and, and everything uh, that we're working on together to move the, the city forward. Uh, I'm looking forward to working with all of you to, uh, build a more, uh, equitable downtown that is inclusive and welcoming to all. I think that's important for, uh, our future, not just for downtown Cleveland, but for the, the entire, uh, city in, in reason it's the right thing to do. Uh, it's the, uh, the, the important thing to do from an economic development standpoint as well. And I appreciate your, your partnership and your work with us, uh, in those efforts. I want to thank our audience, uh, for joining us, uh, today and, uh, let you know that, uh, the recording will be available, uh, via, uh, Facebook and on YouTube. Uh, so if you missed part of it, you can continue to watch it, uh, and, uh, share with, uh, your friends and networks as well. Uh, but again, thank you to our guests and uh, thanks to the team down here at Downtown Cleveland Alliance for putting the, together the webinar, making it possible. Uh, and we'll see you next week at three o'clock for downtown now. Thank you, everybody.